Principal of that great school and this church school has been a partner of this city. Marinado Seventh Day Adventist Church has been a great partner of this community for many years. And it's my honor to welcome and congratulate you. This is a Center for Academic Excellence Award. Thank you so much.
Okay. We are now on to public. We're now in the public comment. Public comment is now open. If you have. Public comment, fill out one of these yellow tabs, come to the podium. You have two minutes. Please state your name and your address. And please, everyone in the audience, please turn off your phones to make sure your phones aren't vibrating. Thank you. I have. Raisa. Okay, thank you.
Greetings, esteemed City Council members and Mayor Gilbert. My name is Raisa Sekeda. I'm here representing the County Commissioner for Women. And my, I need my address, right? Sixty-two twenty-one Southwest One Forty-seventh Place, Miami, Florida, three-three, uh, one-nine-three. Uh, and so I've been researching the gender pay gap, particularly the intersections of not just gender justice, but economic and racial justice. And I'm here in support of Agenda Item eleven-point-four, which is Councilman Igudaro's resolution authorizing the city manager to develop and implement a paid parental leave policy for city employees. As of now, federal FMLA doesn't cover the public sector, it just guarantees twelve weeks off. And so I have here a August twenty-eighteen report from National Partnership for Women and Families on paid leave. And they state that the need for parental leave is not only a gender justice issue, and I quote also, a racial justice issue. Paid parental leave would improve child and maternal health outcomes by allowing mothers to heal fully from childbirth, encouraging breastfeeding, and reducing the likelihood of severe depressive symptoms in new mothers. We live in a country where only forty-three percent of black workers and twenty-five percent of Latinx workers report having access to any paid or partially paid parental leave compared to fifty percent of white workers. Paid leave is particularly important to helping people of color get the care they and their families need without jeopardizing their economic security. The racial wealth gap means that families of color have, on average, have fewer resources than white families to plan for and absorb the effects of a serious personal or family medical issue, including the birth or adoption of a new child. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Igudaro, for this resolution. Miami Gardens would be joining a statewide movement of over thirteen municipalities and four counties in Florida that have passed paid parental or family leave for their employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How would you free?
Do, do I pass the report to anyone?
Well, you, you can, if you like, you can give it to him and he'll give it to the clerk, but just, this is on the consent agenda, so really it's actually already passed.
Good evening. Two items I want to speak on. Number one, I want to thank Councilwoman Igudaro for sponsoring Item eight dot one that's before you to, I guess, vote on its first reading tonight. Although I think this ordinance, if it passes, the county ordinance ordinance was still superseded, but I think it's a step in the right direction in sending the county a message that we are not in support of Formula One racing and that, um, it was a continued support Commission of Barbara Jordan efforts to stop it. Uh, number two, uh, before coming here tonight, watching the news, Channel Six in particular, they were, um, telling a story about some rapper being shot last night on I ninety-five and Miami Gardens, uh, Drive. I ninety-five, oh, and they said it was in, they were reporting from Miami Gardens. Miami, I ninety-five, I don't think any parts of it is in Miami Gardens. I get sick and tired of it as well as probably many of you of hearing erroneous news information, reporting news from, that's supposed to be in Miami Gardens. I asked the mayor and, um, to use your blog, all our media sources, to send, um, the address, I'm sorry, not the address, the email addresses, phone numbers, whatever, for all the news stations, newspapers, and ask the citizens to call, report, email the news media when they report erroneous information. It's up to us to try to stop this. Uh, if we don't stop it, nobody, nobody else will, so that's, that's my, uh, request. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Having no more cards, public comment is now closed. We're now on to ordinances for first reading.
Item eight-point-one, an ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, amending section sixteen dash twenty-six, chapter sixteen, article two, noise ordinance in perine of the Code of Ordinances to eliminate an, an exception for auto racing, provided for adoption and representation, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing severality clause, provided for inclusion in the code, providing effective date, and this is sponsored by our Councilman, Airborne Igudaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, like most of you, I am frustrated with where we are with this whole Formula One issue. Initially, I entered this conversation with some reservations because I knew that politics will always be politics. Uh, there are going to be people who sell out, you know, compromise. And I don't want to be anybody's pawn. I, I went, like, some of you went downtown to advocate on behalf of this city and this community. And it's very frustrating to see the level of disrespect that we see, uh, displayed not only to our commissioner, but to this entire community. I understand that, uh, we, we have to deal with the county. Uh, we have to deal with our partners at the stadium. But when you have the will of the people being trampled upon like the way they've done, I think we need to find a way to get respect, uh, from this kind of deal. Um, I've been working with, uh, the city attorney to look at what we currently have in the books that would allow us more teeth to make sure that this does not happen. Uh, this is more like a preemptive approach to getting this, uh, Formula One off our backs. And one loophole I saw and that we saw was that currently in our ordinance, there, there are some exceptions that, that is allowed for excessive noise in the community. And that exception does not, it covers motor vehicles. Motor vehicles can, you know, understandably make some noise, so we can expect that. But nobody contemplated car racing. So we have to make sure that that does not include car racing. So that, that is particularly what this item is looking at, amending the code to not allow car racing as an exception.
Thank you.
I move it.
Okay, I, I'll second it for discussion. Mr. Igudaro, I, 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 I struggled with this item, Mr. Dupree specifically. I want, sometimes, we, we looked at bringing items and we decided to wait on Commissioner and the item that she was bringing because that's the way that it's supposed to be done. We can support and we can pass this item. Th- this is, this is the issue. Right now, our ordinance, we would interpret it not to exclude car races anyway because that's an organized event. So that's how we would interpret. We, that's how we do it. So from our perspective, they don't get an exemption right now. That, that's how we are interpreting it as a city. And this is going to be a whole bunch of law, but there's this whole line of law that says, if someone has a right to do something and you change the law after they've entered into a contract, they can sue you for it. There is a danger in changing our ordinance while we're in the middle of a fight. And, and so this is first reading. It's, it's not actually changing anything. We can talk about the, we, we can look at how we do this stuff, but what I don't want from this body is to react to the pressure of the politics with a whole bunch of litigation because, a whole bunch of legislation because that will lead us into litigation. Right now, I believe that we are pretty well situated with regard to them having races outside of the stadium. We've talked to the city attorney. We're engaging a law firm that we have under tenure because we believe this will end up in court. And I'm working seemingly every day with Commissioner Jordan on this because we have to stop it. But what we ought not do is rush into changing our ordinances. So I, and I'm going to support this item because I understand the will and the spirit that it was brought with them, but th- there is a danger in passing something that changes our law because now when they bring their Burt Harris Act, they'll say they entered into a contract with somebody based on the existing law and then we changed the law. That is what they're going to say. So understanding that, that's why you've seen the posture from the manager's staff, the attorney's office, and myself, while we have let the S District that we all passed, while we let that put in the work that it was supposed to, and while we have a good understanding about what our rights are as a city. And so it might be helpful to have that type of briefing, like what we can do to stop it right now as the laws are written under our books. And under our laws, our ordinances, we do not exempt car races from noise ordinance. If it's unreasonable, we get to side it. We don't exempt them right now. This would seem to in, indicate that we do and we're changing it. We don't want to do that. Not, not in the middle of a fight. Because if you're changing it in the middle of a fight and they sue you, it's kind of evidence that it didn't exempt them. And so, and, and we probably, the law doesn't necessarily allow us, the sunshine law doesn't allow us to have this conversation off the dais. But, but that's the issue with the ordinances and resolutions that, that we're looking at. So those are the problems. And, and it, it really needs to be something that's decided by the stasis. We need to figure out how we are going to approach it. We can do the peppering of legislation or we can hire, hire a law firm and assert our rights in court. We, we believe we understand what our rights are as a city to allow and disallow events outside of the stadium. That is what we believe.
Uh, Mayor, my question is, and it's probably for the city attorney, and I was just, and I've read this over and over. I was trying to see what is the difference in this ordinance than what we have already approved?
Oh, I see what you're asking.
Yes.
Um, well, if you look at the provisions of the ordinance that are underlined, what's before you was added. That's added language. The other language is already existing. So as the mayor did indicate.
So this is in addition to what we already have on the books?
Right, we already have a noise ordinance on the books. So as the mayor indicated, currently, um, there is no exception in our ordinance for races outside of the enclosed stadium.
Now, I, I'm talking about what we have on the books as it relates to the Formula One, what we've already approved. What's the difference in this and what we've already have approved?
Oh, there's no, there's no, those are not related. You, you, the resolution to council stated with the will.
Yes.
That's clear. Class, staff gets that. The mayor, the manager has discussed that with staff. We get it. If anything came to the city council or City of Miami Gardens right now for approval, we know what our marching orders are from you all.
Right.
This has nothing to do with that. This is an amendment to our current and existing noise ordinance, um, that's already on the books.
Yeah, it is.
I, um, I ju, I think that you, you, um, Mr. Mayor are probably correct. If we're going to deal with Formula One, let's deal with it all in one thing. And not piecemeal it and, and not be able to see the whole thing altogether. And, um, if we're going to have a meeting, we should have a special meeting or hearing so that we can, um, flush it out as a, as a council, um, to be able to deal with those issues that are of, of concern to us as a city and as a body. And, um, I think we ought to be able to surmise what the relative position of our residents are and then move forward in that way. Because again, if we piecemeal this thing, it'll get to be pretty confusing. And we'll have a, a whole litany of different things and then it'll be who's on first and what's on second. So it needs to be clear, it really needs to be clear what the position is of, 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 of this council, how that position is going to be and who's going to advocate for it.
Hearing this information, Mr. Igudaro, what, what are your thoughts at this point?
A good question. I, I, like the mayor said, this is, we, most people may not know that we're not supposed to speak, um, to each other besides this forum, right? So I don't want us to, by omission, not do anything. This is, if for anything is a catalyst, I, I appreciate the item that Councilwoman Odom brought and it brought a whole lot of power to it. But this is a way for me to have us still continue to engage in the conversation about what we can do as a legislative body to constrain the forces that are coming against us. So that's the point.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, listening to what you said, can we set up a, a sunshine meeting amongst all of us? And have a discussion because this is actually our first time having an open discussion on this.
Yeah.
Be careful.
Yeah.
Um, um, okay, your charter has your mayor as the designated person to deal with other governmental agencies. Right now, this is at the county level. We have been dealing with, um, Mrs. Jordan's office. He has engaged me in the manager's office. And I think we should let that process play out. This is just my advice to you. Because we may end up in litigation and I don't want to have a public meeting where all our business is told to everybody in the public. We have strategies. I have a litigation strategy. I already told you that I think at the end we're going to be fine. Um, and, but we need to play it out. But I don't want to necessarily get into our strategy in the public. If you just indulge me, please.
Yeah, it is. So, we, I've advocated the city council's position and my position that we're not supporting this. If, if we don't say a lot about this in public, it's because the county is the county. They have all the money in the world. When this ends up in court, we have exposure. As a city, we have exposure. And so my duty as the mayor and our duty is, as, as the elected leaders of the city, it isn't just to, hey, you know what, to fight against this. It's to protect the city from what could be a significant judgment. And so we don't do a lot of talking about it, but I, I think that the spirit of what Mr. Leon said and, and Mr. Igudaro, we don't, Mr. Igudaro said, we don't actually get to speak about these things. So they don't necessarily hear, the conversations that I've had with Commissioner Jordan or the county mayor or them and the back and forth. They're probably hearing now that we are engaging a, a law firm on this because we understand that this is a fight that will not end up in front of the county commission. It's probably going to end up in somebody's courtroom. And so, and so we have to get lawyers. But having said that, the reason why I said we need to treat this delicately because I don't want to defeat this item because I don't want to give them the idea that that there's any weakness on this board. We're against this. We're against this. That's what the resolution said from the council before. We're against it. So I didn't want to defeat this item. I would like to take it up maybe later when we're taking up the commissioner's item when it comes to us or something like that. So, but, but this is, this is getting into the realm of, th- these are deep waters for us. Because the county is the county, but we're the people who are going to have to deny the permits. And so we've also engaged, um, experts to actually do the noise analysis because we can't act in an arbitrary and capricious way. We have to have a basis for doing everything we do if we're going to make denials. And so what we're doing right now is trying to position the city to make manifest the will of this body. That's what we're doing.
So should we bring this item back when we bring the commissioner's item or when the commissioner's item come before us?
I, I think that's probably what we should do. What I don't want to do is us vote against the item because then they'll think that we're not, that we're in favor of the racing and we're not in favor of the racing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And, and that was my point. I was hoping that Mr. Igudaro would pull the item rather than have us vote on it.
Thank you. No, no, again, I understand your, your preemption. I just want to make sure that some of the conversation or the information that came out from this dialogue I never had. It's something instructive in terms of letting everybody know that we, we have a strategy moving forward that we could not have talked about in any other way. So I, I think that's important. So I, I would draw the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Withdraw all those in favor with six five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Ordinance is off as second reading and public hearing. Item nine-point-one. An ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Miami Gardens, entitled Administration, Article Nine, Purchasing by Creating Section Two-dash-seven-six-six, entitled Fair Chance Requirement for City Contractors, amending Article Four, Officials, Officers, Employees, and Departments by Creating Division Three, to mean entitled the Fair Chance Ordinance, to provide regulations regarding the consideration by the city and by city contractors of the criminal history of applicants for employment, and to provide limiting provisions and provide for repealer, certability, codification, and an effective date. And this is sponsored by Mayor Oliver Gilbert.
Ah, um, public hearing is open. Public hearing is open on this item.
There's no public hearing.
Aren't?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, okay, this, this, this ordinance just changes our purchasing code. Basically what it does is it bans the box for us and it doesn't just ban the box for us, but it bans the box for people who are doing business with us. Um, we, we fought hard. We voted overwhelmingly as a city to allow former felons, people who were formerly incarcerated, to actually vote again. Um, we do that, but we don't actually accept them back in the community because we still allow people who we do business with to actually discriminate against them with regard to employment. Uh, they need, they need the same rights that other folks do. They need jobs. That's what this does, not just for the city, but it does for the people who are willing to take checks from us too. With that, I move this item.
Second. This question to ask, uh, question from the dais, any questions? None? Is this voice?
Call the roll.
Call the roll.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Igudaro?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Item nine-point-two, an ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, amending chapter eighteen, Parks and Recreation Division, Division Eight, Undesirable Acts and Behavior of the City of Miami Gardens Code of Ordinances by Establishing a Prohibition of Nicotine Vaporizers, Vaporizers, Perineal Cigarettes Throughout the City Parks, Provided for Adoption and Representation, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict, Providing Suburbity Clause, Providing for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by our Councilman David Williams Jr.
Um, pu- public hearing is open on this item. Second reading, public hearing is closed. Mr. Williams?
Okay, well, you know, fundamentally, you know, one of the purposes of municipalities is to protect the safety and the health of its residents. And I think this item is a step in that direction. Uh, before you, you have reports from the Surgeon General, the Center for Disease Control, uh, and there's been a lot of chatter around the country in the news about the ill effects of, of vaporing and adding, uh, all kinds of substances to it. We have an opportunity to take the lead as a city and, and say that we're not going to have that happen in our parks and our recreation and make them a gold standard of what the country looks like. Uh, with that, I move the item.
Second. Item been moved and seconded. Now, there any?
Okay, yeah, there, there was, I, I, I'm. It's, it was amended.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead and amend the item.
Okay, I'm going to amend the item.
To incorporate all city facilities.
All city, all city.
And it's attached to the document, yes.
Okay.
So I'll, you second that. All this, all those in favor of accepting the amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, now we're back on the main item. On the main item, um, he's given the explanation. Uh, I'm supporting the item. I think that this is a good item. We, we want to make sure when we're enforcing this item, one of the things that we've done is we've, we've decriminalized. We don't really arrest people for possession of marijuana anymore. At least that's the will of this council. We want to make sure that when they're doing, when they're enforcing this, they're also enforcing this in the pre-trial diversion type, uh, programming, the treatment type things. We do not want to put more people in jail for crimes like this. We just want to prevent the activity. So, but I think that's incorporated in our policies already. So I think there are no further questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilman Igudaro?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
I vote yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item nine-point-three, an ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, amending chapter six, article five, section six-dash-one-nine-five of the Code of, Code, Regulating Events During the Two Thousand Twenty National Football League Super Bowl, Provided for Adoption and Representation, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict, Providing Suburbity Clause, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, Providing for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by the city manager.
Mr. Manager?
Mayor, councilmembers, there are no changes from first reading, but just as a reminder, this amends the clean zone that we have in the City of Miami Gardens, which will allow the NFL, the NFL activities, any city activities that we may be involved in, involved with during this Super Bowl, uh, week.
Okay.
No other changes from that.
Is it public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing on this item is open. Public hearing on this item is closed. All right, um, you all know what this is. This allows us to do stuff in our city during the Super Bowl. So we definitely want to do that. Mr. Clerk? Oh, I need a motion.
Motion.
It's a move?
Second.
It's a move and seconded. If I could get the council members to turn off their phones right now. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Igudaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item nine-point-four, an ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, amending Division Three of the Chapter Twenty-Eight of the Code of Ordinances, entitled Unsafe Structures, Provided for Adoption and Representation, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict, Providing Suburbity Clause, Providing an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by our city attorney.
All right, Madam Attorney?
Mayor, councilor, how about that? We are on the unsafe structures, um, sponsorship.
I was curious.
Michelle Samaru. But in any event, at any event, we revamped our, uh, unsafe structures ordinance in order to make it simpler, a simpler process for both, um, people who receive notices as well as staff. So we just revamped it to make the process simplified. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on this item is open. Public hearing on this item is closed. I move the item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other questions, comments from the dais on this item? Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Igudaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item nine-point-five, an ordinance of the City Council of City Miami Gardens, Florida, relating to elections, calling a Twenty Twenty General Election and Special Election for, for mayor and for council seats one, three, five, and proposed charter amendments, provided for runoff elections if necessary, provided for qualif- qualification of candidates, provided for close of election books, approving official ballot form, provided for notification, provided for adoption and representation, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city clerk.
Mr. Clerk, this calls the election?
Yes, sir, this calls.
Public hearing on this item is open. Public hearing on this item is closed. Questions about the election ordinance, you all? Call the roll. Oh, I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Igudaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Motion, um, item passes seven-zero. We're now on to the consent agenda. Motion, um, item passes seven zero. We're now on to the consent agenda. Item eleven point one. Resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida approving the twenty twenty legislative program for the city. Provided for adoption representation, provided an effective date, and this is sponsored by Mayor Oliver Gilbert. Item eleven point two. Resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida allocated funds for Vice Mayor Rodney Harris's special events account in the amount of three thousand dollars. To host a real men's serve honorary event, provided for adoption representation, provided for effective date, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Rodney Harris. Item eleven point three. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida allocated funds from Councilman Igadaro's public affairs account in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. For a Christmas election in December two thousand nineteen. Provided for adoption representation, provided for effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilman Airborne Igadaro. Item eleven point four. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Authorizing city manager to develop, implement, and amend as needed a paid parental leave policy. Provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilman Airborne Igadaro. Item eleven point five. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Allocated funds for a public affairs special events account in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. To host Councilman Leon's first annual senior citizens Thanksgiving luncheon, not pro tot, to November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Provided for adoption representation, provided for effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilman Reggie Leon. Item eleven point six. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida supporting Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom's annual toy giveaway. Authorizing sponsorship of the event in the amount of three thousand dollars for a public affairs special events account, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom. Item eleven point seven. Resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Supporting Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom's annual World's Aid Awareness, authorizing a sponsorship of one thousand dollars from the public affairs. Special events account for the event on December fifth, two thousand nineteen, not pro tot, for the adoption representation. Provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom. Item eleven point eight. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Authorizing the one-year renewal of ITV number fifteen dash sixteen dash zero three nine and perin sidewalk replacement and installation annual contract. For the budget and amount, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point nine. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida awarding a bid to General Asphalt Co. Inc. For the two oh seven street right lane extension project in response to ITV eighteen dash nineteen dash zero two two. Authorize city manager to execute the contract for this person, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point ten. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida awarding a bid to Incline Painting and Waterproof in Court. For providing turnkey painting services, including but not limited to all labors, materials, and equipment required to pressure clean, scrape, patch, and repair all exterior surfaces to receive new paint. First specification for the Betty T. Ferguson Recreation Center. Authorize city manager to issue purchase orders on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed the allocated budget amount for this purpose. Provided for the adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point eleven. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida approving the Vista Lago final plat for the property generally located at five oh two Northwest two oh seven Street, Miami Gardens, Florida, three three one six nine. Attached here to is exhibit A, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point twelve. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida approving the Venetia Palm final plat for the property generally located at Northwest one fifty-nine street and between Northwest forty-fifth Avenue. And Northwest forty-seventh Avenue and south of Northwest one fifty-nine street. Attached here to is exhibit A, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point three. A resolution of city, huh, eleven point thirteen. A resolution of the City of Miami Gardens Florida approving an interlocal service agreement with the Miami Gardens Community Redevelopment Agency. Provided for adoption representation, provided for instruction to the city clerk, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point fourteen. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida accepting six hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Year two grant award, not pro tot, to September one, two thousand nineteen, from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. Perin CDC Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health Reach in Perin Grant. Authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents related to the acceptance of the award. Provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager. Item eleven point fifteen. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Authorizing the city attorney to execute a contingency fee agreement with Sterns Weaver, Westler, Al- Aladeff, and Citizens P.A. For the water surcharge litigation against the city of North Yon Beach, provided for instruction to the city mi- city clerk. Provided for the adoption representation, provided for effective date, and this is sponsored by the city attorney. Item eleven point six. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida allocated funds from Mayor Gilbert's special events account. In the amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars to Nias Project Fellowship Program. Provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Mayor Oliver Gilbert. Item eleven point seventeen. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Allocated funds from Mayor Gilbert's special events account in the amount not to exceed five hundred dollars to support St. Monica Gardens. Provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Mayor Oliver Gilbert. Item eleven point eighteen. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida allocated funds for Councilman David Williams Jr.'s public affairs account. In the amount not to exceed two thousand dollars to support the Carroll City Middle School Science Club. Provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilman David Williams Jr. Item eleven point nineteen. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida. Naming the playground within Bunch Park located at one five six zero zero, west Bunch Park Drive, Miami Gardens, Florida, as the Joe Anro playground. Provided for instruction to the city clerk, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom. And a lot, item eleven point twenty. A resolution to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida approving the Hard Rock Stadium final plaque. For the property generally located at east of Northwest twenty-seventh Avenue and west of the Florida Turnpike Extension. And north of Northwest one ninety-ninth Street, Honey Hill Drive in Perin, and south of Snake Creek Canal in Perin C dash nine right away. Attached here to is exhibit A, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager, and that is your consent agenda.
Need a motion or consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Show the consent agenda adopted. We are now on to quasi judicial? We have quasi judicial, right? Yes, we do.
Good evening and welcome to the quasi judicial portion of the December eleventh, twenty nineteen city council meeting. For those persons that will or may be speaking on an item on the agenda or commenting on any item, please stand up and be sworn in by the city clerk. For the applicants, your item will be called to order by agenda number and by title of your request. When your item is called, please approach the microphone and when addressed, please speak directly and clearly stating your name and address for the record. And explain the reason for your request. Note that all exhibits presented to the mayor and the council will become part of the public record.
Thank you.
All right, raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm that the testimony provided this evening is true and correct to the best of knowledge?
I did. Thank you.
All right, um, item thirteen point two, ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Item thirteen point two point one. An order to the City Council of City Miami Gardens Florida amending the Code of Ordinances as outlined in exhibit A attached here to. Amending article one, general provisions, article nine, generalized schedule of permitted uses. Uses permitted with extra requirements, special exemption uses, and prohibited uses, article ten. Accessory uses and structures, article eleven, development standards, generally, generalized table of development standards. Article twelve, off-street parking, loading, and vehicular circulation requirements. Article fifteen, planned corridor development district, PCD in Perin, and entertainment overlay district, EO in Perin. Repealing and replacing article fourteen, minimum landscape and buffering requirements, fences, walls, edges. Creating division eight of article fifteen, business transitional overlay district of the City of Miami Gardens Land Development Regulations, creating a location for the business. Trans- transitional overlay district as outlined in exhibit B attached here to. Provided for adoption representation, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing a certifiability clause, provided for inclusion in the code, providing an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager.
Good evening, council. This is the second reading for this item. Uh, the requested changes were incorporated as attached to the exhibit C in your packet. Other than that, there are no further changes or additions.
Um, it's just, the, the attorney just said, uh, each amendment has to be voted on. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if this changed substantially between first and second reading?
I think you have to have a third reading in order to make it effective, because you took the one, one thing that was special exception and made it permitted. But maybe not. We'll go through them.
Okay, we'll go through each of the amendments.
The first amendment, amendment number one, um, again, as the city attorney said, is a change from, uh, special exception use for banquet hall facility to a permitted use. Within the business transitional overlay district.
Okay, Ms. Leon?
Uh, in regards to that one, my question was talking about the parking on one hundred eighty-fourth street, right behind the banquet hall. Um, we talked briefly about, um, some different parking locations other than the residence yards. Did we ever look at that?
Yeah, those would be covered when the applicant would come in for a business license. Those issues would be addressed through the certificate of use review process and the zoning inspection process.
Thank you. How, how would they be addressed?
Well, we would do a zoning inspection, and then we would assess what, um, any mitigation measures that need to be taken place for that specific site.
Well, when I say, when you say any mitigation measures, I'm just trying to figure out, are you going to make them add parking spaces? Are you, what, come up with a park, a remote parking plan?
Or a shared parking agreement would be another possibility. So, yes, those are all options that we'd consider.
Okay. Any other questions about this one? Um, o- o- on this item, this, and so we've, we've talked about this item in relation to one. Place, the place that already exists, but we're changing the zoning for that entire area?
Only for the business transitional overlay district, which is that section from, uh, four forty-one, Second Avenue going east, uh, to the Turnpike. So, only that.
Second Avenue going east?
I'm sorry, going west.
West to the Turnpike.
Only that's, only that section.
So, what, what happens to those other businesses or churches that sit on the opposite side of the?
It wa- it wouldn't have any effect on them.
But it's on.
Sure, go ahead.
This is fair. Um, but we are only changing the businesses, not the residential.
Correct.
That's on that quarter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're changing the land use.
We're, we're changing the, the zoning district, but if you're already a residential lot there, there's nothing that you need to do. It, it, it doesn't change your being able to have a house there as of right now. You would just become a grandfathered use.
Yeah, my, my concern is that now, with, and this is why I think we probably need a third reading on that. Um, though I am a little swayed by the fact that we can deal with it in this ticket of use. But you're allowing for that use, which can be a pretty intense use where people actually have their houses. So, as property begin to trans, you know, transfer from, transfer ownership, people decide they want to put up a banquet hall, they can put up a banquet hall. And that's a use that people did not anticipate when they, when they bought their houses. And it's not, I think we should do it. But I think that that needs to be, I don't want us to say, people to say, we surprised them with this. That, I really don't want people to be surprised with this.
Let, let me just add that it doesn't change the additional standards for banquet facilities that we had already adopted it, um, back in July when we did those set of amendments. So, you still have to have a minimum lot size, which is two acres, which is pretty large. Um, so, but that, you know, that doesn't change. You would have to have a pretty significant sized lot to be able to accommodate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if it's a multi-level facility, like, you know, the, would that?
I'm sorry, could you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, does that include multi-level facilities?
It could, it could, well, you would have to have a minimum lot size of two acres, which is, which is pretty large. That's over eighty thousand square feet. If you don't have a lot that's that large, then you would not be able to have it in any event, even if we permitted it by right.
Well, I, I think what she was saying with this, the square footage was going up, what, is the square footage a substitute for the acreage? And you're saying no. So.
Maybe I didn't understand.
If you, if you, for instance, you said that's eighty thousand square feet, what if you had a building they proposing in height that ended up being a hundred, you know, thousand square feet, because it, because of, it was up? Could, could it, she's saying, you're saying no, they still have to have two acres?
Right, you still have to have two acres.
Of land.
Of land, yes.
Okay. All right. I need a motion on this item, on the, on the amendment.
Motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Well, we already had those, but questions, comments from the dais? All those in favor approving this amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is, it's, that is a voice vote. Are those?
It's not a voice vote?
You meant it's not a roll call?
Roll, not a roll call?
Not for the amendments.
For the amendment.
But for the item we're going to roll.
For the item itself, it's okay, cut.
Okay, all those opposed? All right, show it adopted. Next amendment.
Okay, the second proposed amendment two was really just a Scrivener's error. There was a mistake in the reference document. Um, it currently reads, uh, code section thirty-four four four seven, uh, parentheses four, and it should have read thirty-four four four seven parentheses five.
That's, that's a Scrivener's error. It's corrected. Move on. What's the next one?
Okay, the, the next amendment, proposed amendment three, um, it just, uh, it deletes the, uh, fencing materials. Um, yeah, it, it deletes the fence materials for, uh, all perimeter fences on, on properties.
Okay. Um, I need a motion on that amendment.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor or questions, comments about that amendment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Show it adopted.
Okay, and the last and final amendment is proposed amendment four. Um, if you remember from the last discussion, we had talked about giving people a, a grace period, a time period. So, this amendment does, um, give them that grace period, and it will allow for six months through until July first of two thousand twenty, before it would become effective.
Uh, it would, it allows, it gives school a grace period. Exactly.
In terms of the landscaping code.
I know.
I can clarify, Mayor.
Clarify, yeah.
It only gives people who are currently in compliance.
That's what.
The, uh, the, uh, the, um, time, not people who weren't in compliance in the first place.
Okay, that, that's, that's important, because you weren't in compliance. We want to be, bring you into compliance right now. So, this allows us to do that. All right, I move the item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions, comments on this amendment?
So, this is regarding landscaping?
Only landscaping.
Only landscaping, and that means that if someone has been cited, right, and they are given six months to be able to bring their stuff up?
No, es- essentially by, what, what we did, I believe you weren't at that meeting, but what we did is that we made some updates to our landscape code. And so, this would allow people that are already in compliance, six months, uh, a six-month grace period, uh, to be able to bring the landscape up.
Yeah, but what I.
We would not cite them, no.
Yeah.
But if you are, right, but if you weren't in compliance anyway, then.
Okay, and the only reason why I'm asking the question, I want to be clear about this, is that I've had a lot of complaints with residents who have been cited for various violations, right? And as they have sought to get the work done, the permitting process has been delayed, right? And so, then the code enforcement officers are coming around on the timeline to ensure that the work is getting done, but it's not being permitted fast enough. And so, there's an anxiety that they're going to continue to incur additional fines for not being, having the work completed because of permits not being done in a timely manner. So, the point that I'm trying to make is, they need to be seamless. When code enforcement puts a deadline on something, permitting needs to be executing it as well. So that as these folks out here are trying to get the work done, that, that our city is, is moving, um, uh, parallel with what, with what needs to be done. Otherwise, they feel, the residents feel, that they're going to incur additional fines for not having the work completed in a timely manner.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, did we remove this item already?
No.
I moved this item?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, questions, comments from the item? All those in favor, they signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Show it adopted. Mr. Amendment? Okay, now I need a motion on the item as amended.
Move it.
Move it second.
It's been moved and seconded as amendment. Questions and comments from the dais on the item as amended? No questions, comments from the dais. We did a public hearing on this?
No, not yet.
Public hearing on this item is open. Public hearing on this item is closed. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Igadaro?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom? Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote maybe. No, I vote yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
We are now on to the reports of the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Manager? Yeah. Yes. Uh, no, no, I was waiting for the mayor to.
Mr. Manager.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about the, your training, the syndrome? Okay. Mayor, I just wanna, a couple things. One, I wanna welcome back to Mayor Whitley, and offer, again, I'll offer my condolences to you and your family. But I'm, I'm happy you're back. Glad to see you back. Um, number two, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday, because this will be our last meeting until the new year. Number three, and most importantly, I wanna welcome back my oldest daughter for the holidays.
I don't have a report, but Happy Holidays to those of you I don't see in between now and then.
Ms. Clerk?
Um, no reports. Happy Holidays, everybody.
Mr. Dyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, uh, express condolences again, uh, welcome back to Mayor, uh, Godspeed. Uh, also, I, I understand today's, uh, somebody just celebrated Kevin Brown's birthday. Happy birthday, young man. He's a consummate professional, always helpful. Thank you for your service to the city.
No cake.
I just wanna encourage you to log on to Miami Gardens Radio, those of you that don't know. We have a radio station. These, you can, uh, download the app at Google Play, and it's also on Facebook and the city's website, so you can, uh, listen to, uh, important stuff from the city. And also, this Christmas holiday, you're gonna hear Christmas carols and beautiful songs on the radio. So, tune in. We need to make sure people are tuned into that station. And again, uh, thank you to Mayor for the work that that Public Affairs Department is doing, and, um, Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Leon?
Uh, no report, but Happy Holidays.
Ms. Wilson?
No report and Happy Holidays.
Councilwoman Odom has a report.
That's right, have a folder full of reports. I want to. I, I wanna start out really by, uh, giving my condolences to, uh, to Mayor and her family. Um, but we just had, uh, the World AIDS Day, and I wanna thank some people who have been working with us over the years. The Miami Gardens Super Soul Steppers has been very, um, supportive of this endeavor, and also Reverend Eddie Davis, Sardever Wright, the Florida Department of Health at Miami-Dade County, the Jesse Trice Community Health Center, Live Healthy Miami Gardens, the Rob Collins at the Hope Foundation. And I wanna give a special thanks to Tangela Lynch and her staff at, uh, Betty T, who have worked very hard with us over the years. I, I wanna just kinda give a little, just a little summary of the HIV and AIDS in, in our community. Um, there are one in eighty-five adults in Miami-Dade County were known to be living with HIV in twenty eighteen. One in a hundred and three are, uh, Caucasians. One in thirty-one are African Americans, and one in a hundred and twenty-seven are Hispanics that are living with HIV. In twenty eighteen, a hundred and thirty persons died of the HIV and AIDS related. Twenty-one point seven percent less than those who died in twenty seventeen. So, the improvements are available medication is increasing as it relates to this disease, and I guess you, everybody know by now that I'm very passionate about it. And each event that we have had over the years has increased. So, we've had a, this time, we had a total of a hundred and sixty, uh, guests that were in attendance. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the managers, even the city attorney and the city clerk. All attended this particular event, so we were top-heavy at this again. Thank you all. Um, on.
There's more?
The twenty, uh, yes, I have a folder full. You thought I was kidding? On the twenty-first of December this month, we're having our annual toy giveaway. Uh, for those of you who are in the musical arena, uh, Ted Lucas Foundation is going to be, uh, partnering with us along with the T.L. Edwards Foundation and the TBS Foundation. All of them are partnering with us as it relates to the toy giveaway. On December twenty-first, from eleven a.m. to two p.m., we will have it at the Buccaneer Park. Uh, all kinds of things is for the children, by the way. The toy giveaway from ages two to sixteen, uh, that we will be giving toys away. The next thing is on an annual base, we normally take our seniors to Tallahassee for the Florida... You can't hear me? You guys can't hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, the Florida Senior Day in Tallahassee is, uh, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, and we will be departing from City Hall on the twenty-eighth at five a.m. We're encouraging you to make sure that you get your tickets, and you can see Hillary Marshall as it relates to the tickets to attend the Florida Senior Day in Tallahassee, Florida. Guess what? That's it. Happy Holidays to everyone.
Mr. Williams?
She took up part of my time. A, a couple of things. First of all, uh, I, I wanna, uh, give a shout-out to Vanita Nelson. Uh, we acknowledged her last night as one of the, the founding members of the science fair and what made this city so, so wonderful. So, thank you, Vanita, all you've done. Uh, on December twenty-sixth, we're having a Kwanzaa event in Miami Gardens. For those that do not know, we have the largest Kwanzaa event in South Florida, which is a big accomplishment. And the last thing, I wanna quickly say that each council member received a book, a program from last night, and, uh, I want to personally thank each of you all, some for nine years and some for only a couple of years, of making it a truly wonderful event, an event that, that, that people around the s- the country inquire about. Just got an email yesterday, uh, from, uh, the District Superintendent of Science, wanting to, uh, have a, 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 a meeting as to how we take this to the next level. So, I wanna personally thank you all, uh, tonight, and everyone having Merry Christmas.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to add that this Saturday, there will be a youth symposium at, uh, Carroll City Middle School from twelve to four p.m. You guys are welcome to come out and hear what some of the concerns are that our youth are having in the community. There's also a toy giveaway on the twenty-first of this month at Betty Ferguson with Kayvon Webster and myself. So, we're asking you guys if you have any kids that's in. That's why I didn't say the time. Well, we, there's enough kids in there.
Well, you know, and that works out, because a lot of times people will go to both, both of them. This time, if they happen at the same time, then they can pick one, yeah.
It's around the same time. So, at Betty Ferguson and at Buccaneer Park.
Right.
So, there'll be two toy giveaways that day. And other than that, I wish everybody a Happy Christmas and a Wonderful New Year.
All right. Um, I got a couple of things. I don't have a folder, I just have one piece of paper, but we have to go through a couple of them. Um, first, the state of the city this year is going to be on the city's, uh, birthday, which actually falls on a Wednesday. So, you're gonna be receiving an item that's gonna reschedule the council meeting. We're gonna have the state of the city in conjunction with the celebration of the city's birthday this year. May thirteenth. Um, also, I did a walkthrough with the manager and all the relevant staff of Bunch Park, the Bunch Park Facility. You're all gonna be amazed.
Yep.
Uh, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be wonderful. And so, as we continue to grow and we get that facility online, it'll solve a lot of the problems with regards to space and the park system. But we also need to always be mindful that when we, when we said we're gonna build that city, that building, we said as a city, we were gonna invest in activities that weren't always offered in our community. And so, we need to think about how that's gonna look and how that's gonna work, and how we're gonna make those things accessible for kids. Um, just wanted to make the announcement that, uh, we got, we got air conditioning back at Betty T. We done sweated through our last suit in that auditorium. Help me, Jesus. There's a press conference. When is the press conference? On the seventeenth? On the seventeenth at ten o'clock. There's a press conference on the seventeenth at ten o'clock that we are having to announce Jazz in the Gardens and the people who are coming to Jazz in the Gardens. I would like for all of you all to be there, seventeenth, ten o'clock. It's going to be here, right? Where's?
December seventeenth?
Yes. So, please come out for that. And we have several groundbreakings that are coming up. I, I would that if you all have it in your schedule, you could actually stop by the groundbreaking when we're doing it. Um, it, great opportunities to show exactly that we're doing things that we said we do with regard to building out the infrastructure and the capacity of this city from a public infrastructure perspective, to actually do a lot of different things in different ways for all of our different populations. And so, it, it's going, it's going particularly well. The senior center is coming up. When is the senior center's groundbreaking? The nineteenth. Um, we just did the ribbon cutting for Norwood Pool and, and Park, which was, it's very well done. Uh, and you, from the tennis court to the basketball court that we run to the pool, which, which looks right to the va- brand-new building where there was nothing there before. It looks like a really good facility. That's gonna be a blessing to the people in that neighborhood. We're working pretty hard to get the pressure cleaning of sidewalks program on for seniors. We're gonna get that on board soon, so that the seniors can stop asking us about the sidewalks that we've been citing them for. I know that you're getting those calls. I'm getting more. They are very excited about that. Um, on December twenty-first in the evening, we are having for the first time something we're calling Snow in the Gardens. We're going to import snow. We're gonna create snow in my garden. So, we're encouraging everyone to come out. It's gonna be at Rollingos Park. Uh, Councilman Leon's gonna be out there making snow angels. He's already promised. Um, and there's gonna be an organized, like, snow fight. Everyone gets to throw snowballs at the manager. Um, and so, these things are things that we are actually these things, it's another community event that I think that, um, that talks about us just not as a city, as a community, and bringing stuff out. And I think the, the last thing that I would talk about, well, before that, you all know that we're, including in the press conference for Jazz in the Gardens, we're gonna be talking about Super Fest and the other things that are coming, coming to the city. So, you definitely, definitely wanna be there. For the first time, we ventured into the arena of providing some type of activity in the City of Miami Gardens, you know, in partnership with people like Ted Lucas, uh, during the Super Bowl activity. That's why it was a big, it was big for you all to change the, the clean zone, so that we could have that activity. So, we're gonna try to make a go of it and make a, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Um, we can make a go of that. So, please, we'll talk about that at the press conference. Please come out. And the last thing, it's probably the biggest thing. Uh, in, in the coming days, the city clerk will be contacting you all, if he hasn't, about a date selection. We're gonna do a council retreat. It occurred to me when we were walking and talking on the, um, the tennis court about, you know, the things that we said we do and how we did it. And next year in twenty twenty, there's gonna be an extraordinary turnover in the elected leadership of this city. And so, sometimes people will see how it turned out, but you don't necessarily know how we got there and how you necessarily have to behave to keep it going. We need to begin to have those conversations, um, just for the, just for the, the soul of the city in, in a lot of respects. Yeah, so, it, it's a, it's a goo- it'll be a good time for us to sit down and talk about how we finished this last year, but how we did the previous, you know, seven years. We had those conversations when we started, about what we do with regard to business development, what we would do with regard to hiring local police officers, what we would do with regard to redeveloping our parks, what we would do with regard to the infrastructure. And we've done those things. Um, but there's work to be done, and the new people on the council, and the people will be here when we're gone. They, they need to, they need to understand how it was done, why it was done, and, and how we move forward. And, and I just got the text message, the very last thing is, we're doing the groundbreaking, I guess, on the, on the twentieth for Risco Park. And so, you know, I just had the meeting with the folks who are doing the design, and I guess their design bill, Risco Park, and I know they talked to you about the stuff that goes there. What we're building on Risco Park for kids with regards to science, technology, engineering, mathematics, recording studios, television, production areas will be second to no facility in the state, probably not the country. We're, we're going to do something that allows kids to dream in ways that they can't, you can't even conceive right now. Things, ways that are, a building that's flexible such that they can talk about the technology and the science of now, but also trying to develop the science and technology of next. That's what we're bringing to the kids in Miami Gardens. And that groundbreaking, it's on the twentieth, um, you should all be there. Thank you all. That's all I have. That is at nine o'clock in the morning. I need a motion.
Motion?
Show us adjourned.